So Molly, do you need, you could use my iPad if you want.
Otherwise.
If you don't have viewers.
Well.
I'm just taking it to it.
Um, I can't.
We can work.
Okay. So I'm good.
Go wait for.
Did you have you think? Oh.
This one we get into, you know, let's say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start the city council meeting for June the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven all. And we'll start by doing the pledge of allegiance. End up remove your hair if possible.
The pledge of allegiance to declare the United States of America. The Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, that is the essence of our.
Do the roll call. Start out with council people. The show lender.
Here.
Kim Helgerson.
Here.
Ray Bailey.
Yeah.
Ali Ryan.
Here.
Empty here. City Administrator Mark Balsing.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Rakes.
Here.
City Engineer Eric.
Derek Gollinger.
Eric, I should say.
Yeah.
Sorry. We also have city admin. Assistant City Administrator Nolly. Police Department Brian Comer is here. Public Works is Wayne Eric. Go on to item number two hundred and citizens comments. Is there anything that go ahead, Matt? I will ask you this here, state your name. And your address is asked.
One at the moment, it's one fifth third street. I'm trying to find out why my car had to be removed when it's licensed and insured. And we got cars all over town that are. I had one part down with my brother. Do I need to stop license license on it? Would that make you happy? But what's the problem?
So, okay, I, the first thing is I'll have to get back to you on this. Okay, you're you're at Scott Bowens property, is that where your vehicle was?
Yes.
So. I don't know, that's part of a larger cleanup.
Right.
It's part of a different part of the ordinance than covers just solely inoperable cars. No, but that's what I mean, it's not that ordinance, it's it's part of a larger property that. Action, abatement action that the city council took on everything that was on the property, not just your vehicle.
What about? Why? You need to go after all of.
Well, we do. Yes, we do, and I, there's a list of probably thirty properties right now that are under under abatement. Um, so.
But yes, there's containers. Mayor has container, this pool has forty foot container. The city has one out by the brush pile, but yes, they're not allowed.
What kind of container?
It's a.
Like a shipping container, okay.
Right, and that it's not, Mark, that is not zoned properly for that type of. Storage unit, and sure, that's something that's council could look at and change, but. That has not occurred at this point in time, that's been the issue with the property, it's not complying with what is required by city code.
Okay. The mayor is.
The city is looking at many other properties and and will continue with that, this is another property we've been dealing with well over a year.
You told me my car was a very inestimable, and you kept saying inoperable. My car is not inoperable. But yet I can't park at my house without you guys being upset that I have all my vehicles parked out front. I didn't know we were only allowed to own one car per person.
Well, that's not, that's not true.
Are they all licensed and tabs?
And insured.
Did you drive it off of the property then?
Yeah. I took it with my cousin for the IBM. It's not fair to me if I decide something happens to one of my vehicles and I need it.
So were you ticketed for vehicles that are licensed and insured is? I mean, did you get ticketed for those?
Not yet.
Okay.
You weren't ticketed for, the vehicle wasn't ticketed specifically, but that property is part of a larger abatement order.
Police Department to my house specifically telling me get and go.
Yes, that is correct, because it's not allowed as a storage area there. That's been the whole issue with the code, it's not a storage area. The city has been dealing with that for well over a year and attempting to resolve that, it's not a storage area that people just go park cars at. And you can't rent it out for storage area either, that's not what it's sold at this point in time.
It wasn't rented.
Can't use it, can't use it nor rent it for that.
So what, you guys basically want the place sold and found and found, yeah, I want to have the purpose of the building? Is that what it's coming down to?
No, that's not what it's coming down to.
Maybe I'll. Always forgot, but I know.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have citizens comments?
Yes. That's a short answer, yes. It's on the agenda, so there'll be time for discussion on it.
Okay. And citizens comments. Off the agenda. Any changes?
So there's two additions to the agenda. One addition, we're both resolutions for summary publication. The first one would be under section eight C. And that's. Resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen, which is a summary publication for the.
Reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, thank you, reasonable accommodation.
That number two one C.
It'll be C under legal. Yep.
Oh, under legal.
Yeah, C under legal. And then the second item. Would be another resolution of summary publication this time if. It's tied to the chicken ordinance, so that would be resolution twenty twenty-three fifteen, that would be under B under old business. Um, it's B under old business, so it's resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
What's the title on that resolution then?
Um, it's an resolution approving summary publication for. Chicken ordinance, and that would of course be adopted if the chicken ordinance is approved.
Anything else that you got?
Well, that's it.
Okay. Anybody wish to? Make a motion on that with the add-ons?
I'll make a motion to accept that the agenda with the two add-ins. I'll approve it, I mean, I'll second it. I'm already in the mayor's.
Okay, there has been a motion made, second to approve the agenda with the two added items to it. Those in favor of the adopting an agenda as said, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes pass. Okay, then we could go on with pick up three of that one time here, consent agenda. Approval of minutes and appointments and financial, we can do three of them at once on that.
I do have one item here, I'd like to just double check on the closed meeting. Um, it does show motion by Ryan, second by Huglum. To adjourn, and then also the adjournment down below was us.
Oh, so that's a typo.
Typo.
Yeah, let's fix that, yep.
Okay.
It's too many minutes we do in a given week sometimes, and.
Right.
The names kind of get stuck in your head, yep.
I'll make a motion then to approve the minutes and the appointments.
I'll second.
There has been a motion made, second. To adapt the consent agenda, approve our minutes and appointments and financial, those in favor of the motion, the ayes.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes pass. Okay, presentations, public hearings, recognition, proclamations. Do anything on that, I'm not aware of any of it, so.
Nope, nothing there.
I saw a motion. Okay, we will go on engineering. First item on it is twenty twenty-three street maintenance ceiling project. Uh, Derek, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, so, uh, yeah, this year, um. What's budgeted for this year's, uh, street maintenance project is approximately forty-five thousand, that was in the budget. Um, so, uh, just to kind of recap on what we're doing here, as part of the overall pavement management plan. Um, we're doing things like chip sealing, crack filling, now the street maintenance end, then there's the more robust overlay projects like we'll be looking at here shortly. And then there's reconstructions, that's how you maintain and, you know, replace your streets. Um, as part of that plan, the most important component is the maintenance. You take care of your, yeah, of your streets that are in good condition by sealing them in one way or another. Um, and, uh. What's on the agenda here tonight is a proposal to, uh, for one form of of sealing. Um, in the past, um, what we've done for street sealing has been, it's commonly known as chip sealing. They come through with their small rocks and the oil and, uh, and they seal the street with those materials. Um, what we're proposing here tonight is a little bit different, um, type of project. Um, it basically does the same thing for your streets, it it maintains your good condition streets, it's just using a slightly different product. Uh, this company that does this, uh, sells this proprietary project, they've been, uh, um, serving multiple cities up in the metro for the past decade or more. Um, uh, so we were able to, uh, catch one of their mobilizations here for this summer. Um, the price for doing this work looks like it's about twenty to thirty percent less, uh, you know, long-term costs. Um, uh. Um, for this type of ceiling as opposed to chip ceiling. Um, so we're looking for approval here tonight on is this proposal from corrective asphalt materials for, uh. Just under thirty-five thousand, um, if approved, they would mobilize in sometime in August and complete the work.
Have you seen this in use before, how does it work, is it okay?
Yes, it is okay, I have not done it myself.
No.
We have multiple, uh, other engineers within Bolton and Mank, and also other city engineers in Minnesota that have that have done it, this is not. Um, this is new to Kenyon, it's not new to Minnesota. Um, it's it's tried and true, it looks like it's been in use for like something like thirty years, maybe more. Um, but in Minnesota, you know, maybe a little over a decade, the cities up in up in the metro that are using it are seeing fantastic results. So that's that's the reason why we wanted to move forward with it.
Derek, have you had any word on this stuff at all?
I read a bunch of cases, man.
There it is. No, it's screwed up.
That's right.
It's back over, you know, where it'll spoil out. So it's pretty raw to make like a real fine aggregate over it.
Mm-hmm.
It's done on newer roads, to keep them newer longer.
Yep.
So. We did it once for a trial.
Hmm.
But. I think it's a good thing, because we're getting more money for our block office.
Yes.
Center the same type of.
Mm-hmm.
And the average then, the, that they're saying five to seven years longer life expectancy for that, that's. Using based on like city traffic then, so we might see longer?
Yeah.
Because there's less traffic, that's a good point.
Yeah, uh, there's a number of different ways that you can look at it, I gave you some of their, you know, sales pitchy type materials. I'm not, I'm not too concerned on if we get five years more, seven years more, that type of thing. If we do this type of ceiling work regularly every five to seven years, whether it's crack filling, chip sealing, or this. Um, we'll take a roadway that would have otherwise only lasted for twenty or thirty years, and we'll get a full fifty out of it. It will happen, I have no reservations about making that. Um, so this is, this is just another method of doing that same thing.
And it's cheaper. Saving money.
Okay, is there any more discussion on? Street maintenance ceiling project.
We just needed.
We need to have a motion on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three street maintenance ceiling project for the thirty-four nine thirty-five, that's what you're looking for, right?
That's correct, yep.
I'll second that one. Any other discussion on it? If not. The motion has been made, second to approve the quarter corrective asphalt materials for thirty-four nine thirty-five, all of those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes pass.
Okay.
Get out of, did they say when they would start?
Uh, I know sometime in August, they mobilize to Minnesota three times a year, August's the last time, so. All right.
Number B.
Yep, uh, next thing on the list is the, um. I'll I'll talk about the Pearl Creek, um, sewer project first, so on the end of easements, we do not have, uh, agreements in hand yet. We had a meeting just before the council meeting here tonight, and Barrett's are here in case they'd like to say anything. Um, uh, but what we hope for is by next month, we'll have, um, we'll have agreements ready for council approval. Um, so what I'll say, we're going to talk about bids here in a minute, is any approvals that we're looking for on bids associated with that project would be contingent upon. Approving the easements. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh. Did you guys want to say anything? No, okay. Um. So, uh. Onto bids, uh, we opened bids for both the street project and the sewer project, um. Uh, last week, um, got good numbers for both of them, uh, the, in in my, in that summary letter. I've got, uh, uh, the low bid, um, from each of those projects summarized, so. Uh, uh, with the sewer project, I had that one estimated at about one point five million dollars, it came in about one point two five million. Um, the street project, um, uh, came in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what the estimate was, so it's good to see. Um, good competitive numbers from the contractors out there, um, the low bidders in both of these cases, we've worked with them before, we have no concerns. Um. Uh, before we talk, uh, about approval of those bids, I just wanted to give you a quick summary of what the total funding scenario, uh, uh, looks like. Um, when we had last discussed funding, I think that was in March, when, uh, George Ilerton with Northland Securities came. Um, we were adjusting the project budgets with some concern that, hey, the estimate's coming in higher than what we were originally thinking. Um, collectively with these, you know, with these low bids that we have. Um, we're looking at a total project cost of about two point five million before, um, now in the two point three range. Um, so that's, that's good to see those numbers, I, you know, broken out in my, in my letter, um, what all those costs. Um, why, depending on the type of improvement that's being made. Um, uh, but it was good to see the the lower prices.
Two for two on the lower, yeah, way to go.
Yeah, well. Doesn't always happen like that, so. So are there any questions on costs or the scopes of either of those two projects before we talk about action items on on these?
Are we adding? You haven't mentioned. The add-on, the blacktop.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's a good thing to talk about, um, so on, uh, on the, uh, um. On the Pearl Creek project, we had a base bid that was doing the lift station, all the pipe work, I had mentioned last month that we had an alternate. For paving the driveway in the turnaround area for the lift station site. Um, so in my, in my summary letter, the total cost that you see includes, uh, that alternate. So the recommendation based on where the pricing came in is to approve, uh, is to approve the base bid and alternate one. Um, for that project. Um, similarly, on the twenty twenty-three street project, so that's the overlay project. Um, that one, we had two alternates, so we had our base bid that had about five blocks in it, if I'm remembering right. Um, we had two alternates, one of them was down in some, some credit development for one block of Washington Street, and then a very similar block along State Streets, that was alternate one and two. Um, again, based on where the pricing is coming in and the needs associated with both of those streets. Um, the recommended action for either of these approvals is for approval of the base bid and all alternates. Um, so in in terms of, uh, uh, approvals, we'll kind of hop back and just kind of handle these one at a time. Um, in order to, uh, uh, accept the bid for the twenty twenty-three Pearl Creek Sanitary Sewer in Gates Avenue, um, utility project. Um, we'd be looking for approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Um, one amendment that we will make to this that is not stated directly in that resolution is, um, uh. Approval of the low bid is contingent upon receipt of the easements, as I had mentioned earlier.
Now, is that blacktop part of it included into this resolution of twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
Yep, if you.
Will be included.
If, if, if you state so, um, if you state that you want alternate one included, then it's included.
Is there any discussion on that part for your council? Okay, included then. I'm going to make the motion then. To approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, accepting the bid for the twenty twenty-three Pearl Creek Sewer Project. Along with alternate. One.
Yep. And making bids contingent upon the easements.
If any, thank you.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? That motion had made and second, we won't repeat it at all, it is resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, ayes pass. So we got that down.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, so, uh, last item would be, uh, very similar, uh, resolution before the twenty twenty-three, uh, uh, street project. Um, uh, in this particular case, you'd be looking for. Uh. I opened the wrong one here, sorry. Do. Do we have the right resolution in the?
Yeah, it does look like we have the right resolution, does it?
I, I do have it here.
Ooh.
I don't.
That's the one approved in plans and specs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the title was right, but.
Yeah.
So.
We all have.
All right, so I can.
Oh.
That out.
This one, we don't.
Oh, the one from last month.
Did it get swapped with another link?
Yeah, no, I.
Okay.
Posted the wrong resolution. All right.
Yeah, no, that's true, because the last one there is the wrong.
Yeah, I just have to print it out, just take a second here. Yeah. Yeah, did you get it, Wayne?
Yeah.
All right. Here's the right resolution up on the board here.
Uh. Yeah, so, uh, very similar to the other one, um, this would be just looking for approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, was that the number?
Yes.
Um, and you would state, um, you would also state the, you know, the desired alternates for this one, so again.
One and two.
The the recommendation is to also award one and two.
What happened to the other?
I don't have it, it's all nine. So we got this, we got that, we got that, but. Thank you for doing that.
I see.
I'm there if you click that button, I thought you could get it, but maybe I'm.
Oh, really?
That's all right, no, I'm.
See it out.
That's all right.
It's the same as that, almost. That's different, oh, here it is. Seventy-one.
It's just alternate, alternate two.
This one's up all about. Are that one, no, sixty-seven, okay.
Any questions on this one, as you can see, the little bidder here is bituminous materials, they're out there, but done work with them before, they do good job.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen with alternate one and alternate two.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Motion has been made then. Pardon me. And second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, along with alternate one and alternate two. Along with alternate one and alternate two. Those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Aye is pronounced.
And that was all for me. Thank you, everyone.
Well, then we'll follow on to legal and.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. First item is relative to requests you've had before you previously. We have some information back, including a survey on. Block proposal with the tractors. We don't have the legal descriptions. We'll have those. So the idea would be coming back to you next meeting. With the appropriate deeds and resolutions to approve that transaction. But that's where we're at right now. So it is, it is moving forward, but it's, it's not, not ready yet. So it's on here for information purposes only.
Okay.
Any questions on that one? I will jump to item B. Which is on the, obviously the cannabis law legalization act in Minnesota that. Was signed into law. A lot of information that I've provided you there. Probably a lot more than you really want. It is in flux. It is. Something that I think will change slightly as the next year goes forward. But as of August first of this year, possession of marijuana is legal. Doesn't mean you can utilize it in public in many circumstances and in other certain places it's not legal. It also doesn't mean that. Legal sales will be occurring. That's supposed to be online in twenty twenty-four. So it's not happened yet, but it is in process. People are still trying to figure out what everything in that, that legislation means, how it's to be interpreted and how it will be implemented. State is setting up its program for that. That's why there is a ramp up time period for retail sales. It doesn't occur until twenty twenty-four. However, there is the possibility that individuals, entities could apply for licenses coming up very soon after August first. Doesn't mean they can start sales, but it may mean that the city will have to attempt to address those or determine how you want to address those. That's discussed in the information that I've provided you. What really I'm asking you tonight is to think about what you want regarding this, how you want staff to deal with it. And if you want us to adopt a moratorium, which I am suggesting you do. We would notice that with a public hearing because that's what the legislation requires and have a public hearing at the July meeting. To adopt the moratorium ordinance. What the moratorium ordinance does. It does not allow the sales to occur during this time period or licenses to be issued, among other things. Until the state has the, the necessary elements in place for regulation of this. So it's really. Is it absolutely necessary? There's some question to that, but it does appear that a number of communities are moving forward with an interim ordinance. To protect the process of you five deciding what you want to do in the community. And one of the things that'll be major for you to decide. Is one, you can't prevent the sales, but is you can determine where those sales can occur. So from a zoning perspective involving planning commission, things like that. That's what this ordinance would allow is a time process for you to deal with that as well as staff. Police and planning commission to figure out where this maybe should go. So. Nothing for you to do tonight except for to tell Mark and I to go ahead. Get a interim ordinance ready, which is in your packet. All that stuff is there. It'll be the same stuff coming back to you, but we do have to have a public hearing. We do have to provide ten days notice. So the suggestion would be to come back at the July meeting and do that.
Sounds good to me.
I agree.
It's kind of just information right now. If you want us to move ahead with setting up the public hearing and. Moving ahead with the next steps of the ordinance, then we'll do that. That's kind of what, way it's on right now.
Everybody good with that?
Good, good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a motion, Mark. We can just get that ready and we'll, we'll do that. Get that ready for you and bring it back in July.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, sorry for all the information, but that's sort of what we put together and.
It's long. I read, I read the bill. It's like. Why do we have to be being things?
That's the problem.
But it's a lot. I'm like, geez.
We, we had two individuals in our office that had to follow it very carefully, and that's why these memorandums were prepared. So.
It's a little confusing.
Yeah.
Where is mud?
Yeah, well, that's.
Not only that, but a headache. It works too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, item C is just a follow-up from your last meeting on reasonable accommodation. Mark referenced that we added that to the agenda. It is a summary publication of that ordinance. I don't know that you have a copy of it. I don't know if Mark put that up, but it basically just is. What we do when we've got an ordinance, it's more than a couple pages long. So we have a smaller summary of that that's published. So it becomes official. It saves the city some money. So we have a simple. Resolution. If you're going to adopt that resolution.
Yeah, do you guys have the resol? Motion?
Ordinance.
Twenty twenty-three fourteen.
They don't.
No.
No, I didn't see any.
No.
They, they don't have it, Mark.
It's in here. Is it resolution twenty twenty-three eleven? No?
No, that's a different.
Okay, no, sorry. Fourteen. Oh. It's the one he added to the agenda.
It didn't, it didn't come down, so.
Okay.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, it, it, it's a straightforward. You've done them before. You just need a motion and second. I don't know. What number was it, Mark?
Um.
Fourteen.
It's twenty-three fourteen.
I'll make the motion.
Twenty-three fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
So. Then am I correct on this here? Then the resolution is, resolution is twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Right, yes. Yeah.
Any? Comments on it or anything?
No.
Who made that motion? Anybody? Lee?
It was Lee.
Okay. Did you get it, Holly? Most been made second on resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Aye.
Thank you.
That is.
It is. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Old business. Request for chickens within the city limits. Mark, how do we go about doing that?
Okay, so what I would suggest you do is first of all, see if there's any public. Comment on the proposed ordinance and then the council discuss it. I'm going to see if I can grab the draft. Permit. We did a permit. And I'm going to go run some copies of that, but you have the ordinance and.
We can have. Is that correct?
Or you think they have it?
Just the ordinance, just the ordinance. Let's see.
Yeah, she's the ordinance, so I'm just gonna go. Grab a rope.
Twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three fifteen.
Well, that's.
That's only if you adopt the ordinance. Yeah, you, you may not even need that.
Okay, okay.
No, you're, you're on to your discussion point, Mayor, of, of what you need on this one.
Yes, I do it twenty twenty-three fifteen.
Yeah.
If it passes.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, this is the update.
This we've talked about changing the three.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Pick up, okay?
You never have to worry.
You know, we have.
You can probably take public comment while you're waiting for Mark.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we will continue on then as Mark is busy. If there's any public comments about the chicken ordinance and would like to speak one way or the other. Please come forward. Date your name and address, please.
Oven Bean. L M C capital L. E L L A N. Last name being eleven forty Manorville. I had made posts after the last meeting. And I posted again yesterday with the ordinance. A number of people have commented that they either moved to West Concord or have. Lost Canyon off the list of where they would live, which we do not have a chicken ordinance. The comments I got after last night mostly had to do. With the fence and basically it's almost been written so that nobody could raise chicken. The four foot fence on the yard. I mean. Heating it in the winter is going to be a problem. Because it'd be a fire hazard. The size of four or thirty inch square feet. That's two feet less than being able to go out just by four by eight boards to build. Thirty-two feet would actually round out more effectively. And my question, when you say six foot in height, is that from the ground? Cause you're requiring it eighteen inches off the ground. Or is that from the bottom of the coop?
They're going to have to have the attorney talk about that. City administrator. Two that pretty much put this together. So the question would have to be directed to them.
It's eighteen inches off the ground.
Yeah, and then six feet in, six feet in total.
From the eighteen inch.
No, from the ground.
From the ground.
So you're not going to really be able to get inside.
Yeah, well.
That's why I mean it's being written so that it won't work.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's being written so it won't work. It's written very similar to other ordinances that are out there. They're actually being used right now and working just fine. But if there's suggestions. Certainly we would recommend that to the council, but this is based on another working ordinance that is in place that there have been licenses issued for chicken.
I have my first coop is four by eight. That I mean, I have raised chicken.
Yep.
Professionally. It's just that if you're going to, you're taking eighteen inches off of that six feet then.
Yeah.
Other thing is four chickens is fine, but most reputable patries won't sell you less than three. Because chickens are a social animal and if you don't have enough. They will basically pack each other to death. And. I mean, when we used to get. Lots of twenty-five, we would usually have two die out of each lot. So you, just because you buy the baby chickens, doesn't mean that they're going to live to adulthood.
Keep in mind, Council, this was a starting point to show you an ordinance that has been utilized elsewhere.
Yeah.
Doesn't, it, it wasn't meant to be adopted tonight. It was a discussion item. That's why market had it on your business for this, for you discussed and.
So that's good. Yeah, it's a starting point.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of variance in these ordinance. The general number that we saw was three or four that were allowed. In other cities. Right, so we, three or four seem to be the most common. Number. That said, different cities around us had Rochester had three. So, you know, again, it's not like to be meant to be set in stone. This is kind of a. Kind of like a composite of what we saw of ordinances. Some of the stuff, some of the ordinance had, we thought was kind of wacky or weird. We didn't include it, but it's kind of just a composite. You know, it's like. A starting point.
Right.
Three, four is a common number, so chickens.
Biggest complaint I saw Mark on the ordinance was the fencing requirement.
Okay.
I mean, I had several people bring that up to me.
Benston Chicken Runs. Must be.
You have to have a fence four feet tall. So it can't be seen from adjacent yards. Um, hey. Nine oh one point zero seven maybe.
Yeah, I'm looking at the app here.
So. I'll be screened from view. All the fence or landscape buffer with a minimum minus.
Okay, and is that like, so people don't have to look at your chickens?
Correct.
Okay, that's okay. I mean. I mean, yeah, I'm kind of. Like, well, what about? I, I mean, people have dogs. Mean dogs. That bark at you and they don't have to have that. I mean, you know, I'm just.
So they have to be fast. I don't know how many ordinances had this. A couple of them did.
Right.
So.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be. I'm just, it is kind of a same. It's a good question. Like.
Yep.
Yeah, do you want, you know, so you know, there's a lot of ugly stuff in people's yards. I mean, chickens are the least of it. Maybe, I don't know. I suppose it's how well you keep your coop, right? You're supposed to be keeping it nice, so it shouldn't.
This is all about how people keep.
Yeah. You, you keep it nice, right? Or you're going to get a ticket. So.
Yes.
So I suppose that's the other thing too. You know, you got to think, well, if they are screening it, then maybe they'll turn into a big. Show. Then no one can see it. I don't know. That's, you know, it's both ways. I guess that's a pendulum. I, I don't know. But. Something to think about. It's like, well, if you can't see it, then how bad is it going to get?
Yeah.
Huh?
More public comments.
I'm wondering why you're requiring.
I didn't hear what she said.
She wants to know why their hoops need to be heated during the winter. Again, I think we took multiple ordinances. It's a valid question.
Some are, some aren't.
Yep. Some are, some are. Yeah, I mean, I always chickens, my, when I was a kid, they don't, we didn't have heat in there. Yeah.
Actually, it's not. Yeah.
Well, again, this came from what other cities have required.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it exists. It's a new. It's not a means to do it. There are other cities that have approved that. It's up to you five to decide if you want that or not at all. So, yeah. Sure, I'm, somebody could do it inappropriately and have an open flame, and I suppose that would be an issue. But that's not what you're assuming is happening.
I mean, I think, like, I kind of, you know, I mean, I didn't have, it was a long time ago, but I think we had, like, heat, maybe a heat lamp. It's like really mild, you know, mild, but and maybe, maybe we say a heated coop, maybe we even have to go that far as to say, hey, heat lamp. Because some people don't know. They might put something like a milk heater in there and things are going to.
You can either.
You might have to say that, yeah.
Kill the regulations so much. I know.
Right.
You get the more stuff that comes up. I get it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's a lot. Yep, I get it.
All right, well, I wanted to add some comments too.
Okay.
So. As you know, in my former role, this came up numerous times. And I was not for the chicken ordinance because. We didn't have, I don't think, the right. Group of people maybe at the time who, who we really wanted. I could be wrong, I don't know, but. Since I don't longer wear that hat and I wear a different hat, the hat I wear now is to bring forth things that the public asks. All because asked me about this. So here we are again visiting this ordinance. I want to thank you all for putting the time into coming up with this so far. Again, this is just a working template. It doesn't mean we're going to do it. It doesn't mean we're going to accept it. It is what it is. I did also do a little bit of homework on this. I talked to a city of about. Seventeen, eighteen thousand people who said in the last. Five years, it said roughly, they said, don't quote us. We've had maybe. Three to four phone calls on this. And normally it's when someone brings a rooster in and person didn't know they could never roosters. So it's pretty mild stuff. Another thing that was brought up to me is, well, how are they going to dispose of the chickens that they pass away? Like checked with disposal companies who said, we're fine. They want to throw them in the garbage as long as they're double wrapped. We'll take it. We just don't want to get any blood or guts or muck on us. So. I checked on that.
Who was that with?
Plum and Waste Management. I talked to Kyle myself today. Um. Again, this is a lot of work. And I think people, once they start looking at this, are going to realize this is work. This is like a puppy. This is work. This is going to be maintaining a coop. This is going to be keeping it sanitary. This is going to be maintaining the chickens. Year round. It's going to be following the permit guidelines. But I'm glad that really it's looking at it because again, it was something that was brought to me. So we're looking at. But those who goes, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, and there's a lot of positive feedback.
Right, again, I have no social media. The stuff I hear is the stuff I hear. So I hear it from word of mouth, from being uptown. Visiting local businesses and folks. So I just want to thank you all for at least getting looking. That was my two cents.
Yeah, you have something. I'm going to ask every one of your council people for your opinion.
Well, I'm. I'm glad that we're looking at it too, that there is people in the community that do want it. I myself am not in favor of it. Your comment last month about being a farming community.
Your comment last month about being a farming community, I agree that we are, but yet. We live in a city and I feel that the chickens should remain on the farms. And as far as the sales, you know. If you want farm fresh eggs, you can buy them from those farmers that are are doing that and have been doing it for years. I just, I, it's the whole policing aspect of it, having to. Use taxpayer money to have a person be inspecting them, going out and taking the calls. I, at this point, I, I'm gonna vote no, and when if, when it comes to that. Okay, unless somebody can convince me otherwise tonight.
Mary, how about you?
Well, you know how I feel. I think, I think it's, I mean, I'm glad we're having this and looking at it. And I think we probably need to do a lot of revising, and we probably need to talk to more people that. Know what they're doing with chickens. And like, I mean, because of course we have, you know, these guys doing it and that's great, but maybe. They need to sit down with people that know more. You know, when we revise the ordinance, just know more about. You know, raising chickens. And I think that would help. Um, I just, and I mean, my kids are big, so it doesn't really matter, but I just think. I mean, there's just, there's a billion pluses that go to it, and I think, I mean, for a family. That wants to put in the effort and put in the work. I think it's a little bit, if 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 the majority of the community wants it. I think it's a little bit selfish to say, well, there's gonna be three people that ruin it. So that we're gonna have to go to their house, so we don't want to do this because we just don't want to deal with it. I, that's not, that's not what we're up here for. We're up here to serve what the community wants. So to me, it's not like, well. I'm not in favor because I think, you know, we're gonna have, I don't, I mean, I don't think you're gonna be driving around looking at people's chicken coops all summer long. I just don't think that's what can happen. And I think that, I mean. We're here to serve the community and to serve our families. That's why we're all up here, so I kind of feel like it's like. That's what we need to think about. And if we need to revise this, I think maybe we should bring people in that actually know what they're doing and do this all the time. So. That's what I think.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mary.
Uh, I'll tell you, I'm I'm really on the fence, uh, and I told Doug this yesterday. Um, I've done a lot of thinking about this. I I agree, I think you make a very, first of all, I want to thank the feedback, because I think that's really good feedback. Because the heating, I never even thought about it, like, you know, there's some good feedback. Again. We took this based out of many ordinances. We just didn't throw this together ourselves, so they did do a lot of work. Of looking at different ordinances and seeing what's out there. Definitely have some revisions and some concerns and valid ones, so I appreciate that. I agree with Mary to a point that I don't want to say no, just. Because I think there will be, will be a few that will not follow the ordinances that we put into place. I don't want to do that. If. What we've talked about, if we set this ordinance and we do this permit. My concern is who's gonna have to police it. Wayne, you don't have time. I mean, I don't expect you to police it. The police, I don't, I don't expect you guys, who's gonna police that? And can we make a firm stance that literally you get one chance? And if you do not follow these, whatever the new ordinances that we come up with, you do not follow that, you're done, and you do not get another chance. Can we do that to, instead of saying, oh, well, you kind of got it. Okay, we'll try and, but in accent, no, like, we need to follow. Orness that we put in place. That's my concern.
Sure.
But I I am on the fence. I think we need to adjust some things. And I I think I have, I have a. Family that has chickens up by me, right, like down my driveway. Now, they're. A different scenario because I think they're considered egg, but they do a great job of it. I never have any issues. I don't see anything. They've got a great poop. It's it's great. Um, so I, I want to be very fair. And I want to do what's right for the community, but I want to make sure that we set everything in place on our end. If we choose to say yes, that. We don't have to continually police it and then be told as a city council that we're not. We're not making people follow the ordinances, because that's not right. That's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have already been answered too, and I I was the only one that voted. Against even getting a discussion this far, to be very honest with you. But yes, I gotta go along. Who's gonna police this? We already got enough problems in this city. With blight and various other things. I can tell you a couple of weeks ago. Officer Metz and myself went cruising through this town. Every street and every alley, we took two and a half hours. And really went through and it took that much time. Now, we're gonna. Just to get this going and then all of the expenses that was added to it after that and going through the attorney and everything else with it. When we're gonna add chickens to it again, who's gonna really place this? Another place is now was added was the dead chickens anyway, that I'm surprised that Plum even said that. But I'm saying, some of these comments that I have have come from fellow council members or. People within the city limits. They were wondering about throwing the dead chickens into the. Recycling, or I mean, into the garbage. What about the smell? Here's another one that was brought up, property values when selling. If you sold your home and you have chickens next door, what does that actually do? You know, in a sense, I'm just saying, telling you what they have told me. Another one is, again, the ordinance has to be enforced. Already, here's another one. We already have chickens here in town. Now, people know that for the last two council sessions that we've had, years back already. Violated it and definitely go ahead and have the chickens regardless of it, it was said, no chickens. They got them right today. Are you telling me, are they gonna comply? Are they, what about these other individuals that will not comply? We have problems with that. Now, everyone, we are a farming community. A lot of the larger towns, yes, I will say this here, do have chickens. But they also don't have wild animals that much. Rodents and everything else that do. Would be attracted to a nice chicken dinner, okay? Another thing we're talking about is the ordinance. We would revise, revise, revise. How many times are we gonna revise? Are we gonna come on next month and say, this is it, boom? Or are we gonna tweak it again? And continue on tweaking. How long are we gonna go on with this here? Those are some of the questions that I either have. People have brought to me and have asked the same questions, which I did not have to answer before then. But I repeated it on to this council. So, yes, I don't have anything against chickens, to be very honest about it, but I also do look at it this way that. We need to do what the majority of the people in Kenyon want. But that's where we're at. So. I gather we need to make a decision if we're gonna go forward with this or not. Is that correct?
Well, your, your options are either. To vote it up or down, or table it. You know, ask us to make some changes to it, come back next month. I've also heard that discussed.
Do you think, I do think that, and I'm sorry, maybe if. You know, I mean, I want the chickens, but I kind of agree with the mayor on this, like, we need to do something. You know, like, we need to get it done one way or the other, right?
Agreed.
Okay, so maybe what if we could do like, because, I mean, you're obviously smart, you know, you know all this stuff about. These ordinances and, you know, read, you know, ma- making this, but maybe you could meet with somebody that. You know, maybe if you're gonna revise it.
Yeah.
And then know something about chickens.
I need some guidance on Google meeting, if I could be, I can have Cal look at it, give me some comments.
Does that make sense to everybody? Like, maybe get another voice in there to help?
Is there a way to do a survey on this, our public? See if we can get a consensus one way or another.
Yes, there is. We can put a survey on the website. And the Facebook page, Michelle can do that, I'm pretty certain, and she's done other surveys.
So can we look into that because?
Yeah, we can put a survey up there.
I don't think everyone here is bad. I can tell you from working the streets here for fourteen years.
Oh, yeah.
Got some really good people that might do one of the things with this, but I agree, we should get the public's input. They don't always want to come to council meetings. I get it, they're busy, it's summer, they get kids and activities. I think if we put something out there, if we can, and get a consensus on it, that maybe will help guide us in the right way to go. Nobody. And I guess there's no interest in it. If we get a fifty fifty split, I guess that is what it is. If we can get a seventy thirty split. Again, I'm not really for or against, I'm just bringing forth what the public is asking me to bring forth. So that's my role here, and that's what I want to do, and. So maybe we can put some value back on the public's opinion and see what they say, because I agree.
Yeah.
Our role up here is not to micromanage in a sense, it's kind of.
Represent our community. That's why we're here, so.
If that's possible, I'm not trying to make it work for anybody, but I'd like to know.
Yeah, we could put a survey on. Um, Michelle can do that on the website. Um, it's been done before, so absolutely.
Yeah, and if we can all get it, then we can share it and send it and.
Yeah.
Maybe we put it in. The utility newsletter that the survey's taking place and.
Well, the next newsletter goes out in July, which means we're not gonna have. You know, probably data back where people aren't gonna have time to respond till August, just FYI, I mean. So we could, but. We could run it from between now and the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Ended. You know, a few days for the council meeting and see what we come up with.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and then if we have to revise, you know, you know, I mean.
But I think then we need to come back in July. We need to be ready to make a decision.
Yeah.
Now, this will be the third council meeting where we've talked about it, so I think we do the survey, if we can get it done, get it out, get it back, get the results. And we come in July, ready to make a decision either way.
Yeah, the survey would be online, so I mean, it's not gonna be something we're gonna send out to people.
No, but just have. Yeah.
And we can try to do what we can to publicize it, um.
Would there also be an option that maybe they could come in and. Scratch something or something?
Kind of a thing. Okay.
We could get copies of it, I guess, and have them here.
I mean, I could have one at the store. I don't care. I can have one there.
Even a phone number for people to call back in.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Right, right.
That's right.
See, that that's the problem with the survey, online survey, is people can vote ten times or a hundred times or whatever.
Yeah, they're writing their name, then they're writing their name.
Yeah, I I would, that's what you should have.
Yeah.
It's just like a written one.
And again, it's just a suggestion. It doesn't mean that what I say needs to go, it's just a suggestion, but to your point. When you said have it ready to go up or down, do you mean, okay, we're gonna do this and now put the ordinance together? Are you asking us to try to do an ordinance? In this month's time as well, not knowing whether or not you're gonna do it?
Well, I, I mean. I I I was thinking that by July that we make a decision either way. Either we're going to go ahead and we're gonna approve chickens and then. Maybe have to adjust the ordinance, or we're gonna say no chickens.
That can we make the motion to like, want chickens and then adjust the ordinance afterwards? Is that, can we do that? Is that okay?
Well, sure, you won't have, un- unless, if you're expecting to have an ordinance ready in July, you should let Mark and I know. I mean, because we'd have to do that, or if it's, you're gonna give it, you know, whatever the vote is, yes or no. Um, then we put the time in then. It's up to you how you want to do it, uh, but that will push it out another month, obviously.
But then we know, you know, then it's, then it's, then we know, you know. Instead of you guys doing the work in case it doesn't go, then you put in all that work and then it didn't go. Maybe we just say, okay, we approve this, you guys fix the deal, and then. I mean, yeah, it's another month, but whatever, then we know what's going through. At least it's off our plate. It'll just be a yes or no approval of the. The ordinance at that point. It won't be like, we're gonna sit here and talk about it for an hour.
That way, you could also take comments. Coming back in, you've had some decent comments today. You can take more comments if that's what the survey is, yeah, I want to see this, and I want to make sure that they. It's set back this way or whatever, you know, whatever. Then you're gonna incorporate that into the ordinance rather than us just taking a stab in the dark again.
Yeah, right, okay.
So we just do a written survey. And. People can come in and fill out the online survey. The thing is, it's more convenient, but the problem is, we have no way to track. I mean, we have no way to track it, so. I'm not sure. How that would go.
I think I'm lost here a little bit. Are we going to postpone this for a month now, or what are we gonna do? I think we should decide.
Well, no, he's.
Either we are gonna go ahead with it, or we kill it, hurry it.
Well, that's what the, so what they're saying is they're saying, okay, we'll decide at the next meeting, whether we're gonna go ahead with it or kill it. Right? That's what we're kind of saying, but then, but i- if we're gonna kill it. Let's just say we're not gonna do it at all. Well, then these guys sat there and wrote another ordinance for no reason. So what they're saying is, we can say yes or no, but if it's no, then no skin off their nose, but if it's yes. Then we already know it's yes. They just, we just know they're gonna tweak the things, the ordinance that people want, and then the next time it comes around, we vote, I mean, we'll, we'll already know. So we won't have to waste any more time on it. It'll just be a vote, be easy. Does that make sense?
Doug, I think, well, yeah, it it does. That's what we were talking about, but the idea is. Over this time period of this next month, you would do a survey of some sort that that Holly or 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 Mark would put together. And we'd get that in, you'd get more information in. That's up to you. And then, and then, yeah, up or down. Eighty percent of the public says we don't want chickens, then, okay, that's what the public said. We listen to the public, that's fine.
We want to do what the public wants to do.
Wayne, you had a comment.
I I I know, and again, I I, somebody can explain it, like. I I was at a meeting last night where we approved the license, and yes, there are some very stringent requirements. It's in a metro community. And you can abide by it and it works just fine, and they've issued over the last. Four years, roughly six or seven licenses for it. That's what they do. But that's what the people wanted there, um, but they do have, it's it's regulated. I mean, it is.
I understand that. Really, the other thing is my firing hat.
Yeah, yeah.
The heat's, yeah, it's a solid question. I have no idea. So obviously, with those of like chickens. They'll never, you've never heated them?
And I have enough chickens, but their body heat.
Right. Like, I could ask Heather too, but she's got way more.
Workshop of chicken people, not to say light up what you've done. Um, there is, it's when they present this, but it's.
No, and 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 I, that is correct, and and Mark's asking who we should talk to, and I know the extension service at the U has provided people, because that's one of the communities I dealt with. They brought somebody in to have that discussion and explain what works, what doesn't work. There is a, an organization, you folks probably know what it is. They've come to another community and explained, this is what works, this is what other cities are utilizing. That's what the ordinance is based on. Now, it's correct, th- this is being used somewhere else in in some context. But that doesn't mean it's perfect for Kenyon by any means, and that's what we said. This was a starting point that Mark and I put together.
Yeah, and good, it was, yeah. Okay, so do we need to make a motion to do the survey? Are we just gonna kind of, we're just gonna do that?
Well, no, I don't think you need to make a motion, um. We can put a.
I I'll be honest, I think the written survey, I mean, is anybody gonna have time to come in and do that?
No.
Online, okay, as for as many as you have, ten people go and say they want it, you're gonna have ten people saying they don't, like, I don't know, just give us, it gives us a.
This is just like, I mean, comprehensive planning and stuff like that. It's very normal to have an online survey. It'll be up to you guys to decide whether or not you believe the results.
She said, if people that aren't on there, okay, then they can come in, but yeah, you, I mean, you don't want to. Uh, maybe we're not getting any traffic. I don't know, but it just seems like you can do it online, do it online.
Yes, and no one's gonna care and want to mingle if we have chickens here.
So they can, if they go to the internet, they can come in and vote with you, but otherwise, do a online survey, see what we come up with and be good for them. Okay, good.
And you thought Michelle had one, that she did one where they had to put in their email address for tracking, so it wouldn't double it?
Okay, so we'll check and see if that's something that could be done, yeah.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's too much work otherwise, yeah, okay.
I just cross that off, no, unpress it off. Online. All right, and then. I don't know about the, I mean, the workshop, is that, is there any interest in? Anything like that?
It gets difficult because. The maj- I mean, I know people that have chickens, but they don't have to. the maj- I mean, I know people that have chickens, but they don't have three chickens, or they don't have four chickens, which we're allowing. They've got a ton more. So how they deal with their chickens is gonna be way different than how we're gonna start to deal with them in Kenyon.
I.
Change ordinance, well, that's not very good, we need to change it again, we change it again, we change it again, next year we got eight months and the your business. I'm like a subcommittee assist in, like, this is the changes that we would like to see. And our recommendations that, you know, the general public and the chicken people would like to see. And if that's, it's your guys' decision, we don't have to have thirteen, really? That's all it was kind of.
Yeah, well, and I think regardless, I mean, whatever one we come up with, if we have the basics, I mean, if somebody we needs to tweak something later on, a year down the road, they can come in here, we can do that later, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Very well.
Yeah, so, yeah, just something to start with. Yeah.
Guaranteed. Happened everywhere else.
Yeah.
Uh, every starting point I've dealt with where there's been a chicken ordinance, it's never not been, to use a double negative, revised very quickly afterwards.
Okay.
Based on comments like this, and that's, that's what you get.
Sure.
Yeah.
Bring it back next month and.
Okay, I have to go. Did you get my email?
Um, okay.
I have to go.
I'm gonna make a final decision next month.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, but yeah.
We have to. I just feel like we have to, either way, we just gotta.
I mean, we spend more time tonight than what the last two times a chicken.
Yeah.
Deal it came up.
The AC's broken in here too, by the way.
Yeah.
And what was that, if you're wondering? What, I'd say their AC's not working in here totally, so. Somebody's coming Friday, as soon as I get anybody on here. Not too bad. It's okay, it's like.
Okay, so we can just, uh, on all business requests for the chickens within the city limits, we can just.
So you, you can just, you don't have to take any action on that.
That on. Oh.
Yep.
For every bit of that.
Both A and B under.
Yeah.
Item ten, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, we move on then. Under a new business in, uh, item A, which is, uh, June. Uh, Scott, or am I?
Scott, go ahead.
I would jump in, uh, it is, been adopted as a holiday, uh, for the state of Minnesota, so no official business for the municipality can be transacted, which means it is a day that is uh, off for city employees that can be off, obviously, you have, you have some that cannot. Um, so it'll become a holiday, and basically, we're asking you to approve that and add that to the city's personnel policy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah. There is no discussion on that, it has to be done, so. Motion been made, second on Juneteenth. Those in favor of it, say aye.
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 Okay, item B. Mark, do you wish to take that?
Yeah. Um, Chief Shobloom is asking that the holiday pay rate be changed to be aligned with other surrounding departments. Currently, um, basically, the officers work, um, twelve hour shifts, and they get straight time for working the twelve hours, and they get the holiday eight hours that they can bank and use later. The officers that have a off day on a holiday also can bank eight hours. What the chief is asking for is that that be increased to time and a half. And most departments that, you know, around us, that's how they work it. The officers are paid time and a half for the hours they work on that day, and then they're paid by eight hours. Um, and so, you know, some places do it at the end of the year. I think most places do the eight hour, the holiday pay at the end of the year, like in December. It would have to be probably some type of separate payroll, um, which we would be able to do. Um, so this, what we're proposing is this would start with June nineteenth and then work forward from there. As far as the holidays that are banked versus being paid out, in reality, it doesn't make any difference because we pay it one way or we pay it another. If an officer takes a day off, somebody's got a cover form and we have to pay. If they don't take it off, it's an accrual, like vacation, and it's paid to them if they leave employment or retire. So the banked holiday, what it's gonna cost the department, it's in the long run, not gonna be any different either way. So that, those are the two things that he's asked for. The personnel committee reviewed it last night, and their recommendation was to change it to ten and a half and that the holidays are paid out. So there's a letter in your packet from Chief Shobloom. This will cover full-time employees.
The holiday pays eight.
Yeah, that would still be eight hours, and then whatever hours they work, right, now their shifts are twelve hours.
Yeah.
So they would be paid time and a half for the twelve hours. The holiday is always eight hours.
Yeah.
Yes.
And also in there that we put in was part-time officers that come in.
Would be paid time and a half, yes, correct, yep.
I just wanted to bring that in, so that everybody knows it.
Yep. Yep, that was also part of it, so. I don't know if there's any questions on any of that.
So the part-timers get five and a half, but they're not getting like holiday pay?
They're on a crew vacationer because they're just part-time.
Okay.
Is there any question on Mary left?
Yeah, she had to leave.
Okay. Um, is there any more discussion on item B? Or change the police department holiday pay? If not, I'm gonna make that motion that we do have set it up that they receive one hour, one and a half times for twelve hours and eight hours holiday pay. And the part-time, it's one and a half hour or one and a half, okay, for their time.
Yep, okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made, made, and second then request a change for a police department holiday pay. Those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, yeah, eyes pass. Okay. Next one, item C is new on-sale liquor license for Angie's. Is there any question on, on that? Be routine, pretty much. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the on-sale liquor license for Angie's.
I'll pass it, or second it then. Any discussion? All those in favor of the new on-sale liquor, liquor license for Angie's, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I pass, eyes pass. Okay, item D is a snowdrifter's donation to the police department for body cameras. Is there any discussion on that? I know what it's about, like, um.
Yeah, so you have a letter in your packet also from the chief. The Snowdrifter, your snowmobile club agreed to donate um, twelve thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars from gaming proceeds that they have toward the police department to be used for toward the cost of body cameras. And he's got more information in there, so at this point, I would just, I guess, ask for a motion to accept the donation. Um, that's pretty much it.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion been made, second. But the snowdrifter's donation to police department for body cameras for twelve thousand six hundred dollars, which I think is pretty nice. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes, eyes pass. Okay, item E.
Um, David Stenbacher, who lives at seven twelve Home Street, is asking if he can remove the sidewalk in front of his house. The sidewalk, which is shown behind you, um, does not connect up to any other sidewalk at this time. I had, um, Derek look at this, and also Wayne. Um, they didn't see any issues with it. If the city ever puts sidewalk in that area, that would be torn out anyway. So, you know, and it would replace with current sidewalk that meets current design, so basically, there's no, there will be no disruption to the sidewalk system. If a homeowner who was on a normal street that had connecting sidewalks, and it's happened a couple times, came in and asked it be removed, I would tell you not to approve it because, you know, we have a system of sidewalks that are connected, but this is one of a few in the community that are not connected to anything, so it's really not gonna make any difference. And it's not probably used very much, so the ordinance says that there's supposed to be a permit for removal, we don't have a permit, and I, and I'm just, and the permit has to be approved by the council, so I'm just asking the council to, you know, rule on this and approve it, and that would meet the ordinance.
Just have a quick question.
Yes.
You can have utilities checked, make sure there's nothing.
Yes.
Or that not even an issue. I would feel bad if you started to pull this.
He's gotta do it for state one before he does, so.
Yeah.
Make sense.
Oh, okay, does seem, okay.
I just feel bad. Started doing that.
Unfortunately, if there are issues, it's not even gonna be flagged by that, it's something that shouldn't be there in the first place. But, yeah.
A piece right there.
Is, do we know what, is he just going to be grassing it?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, okay. I'll second that.
Okay. And a motion has been made, and second request sidewalk removal for David Stenbacher at seven twelve Home Street. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they have passed the motion passes. Isn't there one other one we had on there?
It's gonna be out in July, I didn't put it on for this meeting.
No. The one you didn't need to worry about that we have.
Oh. And the other thing that was talked about, a person, it's gonna be July, under consent agenda. It wasn't. We didn't have enough time to get it, and I didn't wanna just.
Okay, so. So we can just move on into other business, is that correct?
Yep.
Schedule of upcoming meetings, it would be KMU meeting will be Tuesday, June the twentieth at four P M. City council next city council meeting will be Tuesday, July the eleventh at seven P M. That's all that I have on there, so now we're going to, uh, council. That, general comments. And I think we'll do, to start with you, Mark.
So the only comment I have, um, and I just wanna bring this up to the council is that you're gonna be getting an evaluation form for me soon, in the next few weeks, let's just say. Um, I talked to the personnel committee about this, I've never had, and I've asked previous councils to, you know, do some type of evaluation, so I get feedback. And after ten years, it's just like, you know, I really, I mean, I think it's really important, probably should be done every year, but um, that, and that's the only thing driving it, is just, I've asked previous councils two different times, mayors about it, and they just kinda said, we'll look into whatever, nothing that was ever done. So I just, you know, wanna let you guys know that's coming, so.
How about you, Gary?
Nothing for me, thank you. Nothing for me as well.
Yeah, it's easy to get along with.
Yeah.
So, I don't really have too much either, but I know we made progress tonight on Pearl Creek, which I know is going forward. Um, I'm interested yet in the chicken deal, I wonder what that's gonna be about. Um, there are other things up, and I gotta say, one thing, Farmers Market has got going again. Um, I know there was a roast fest meeting last night, which I did not attend, I had a few things to do, I'm sorry. But, uh, I gotta thank the people that have been on the parking board, we got swimming pool going, um, we got a lot of things going for us.
It's a busy time here, so.
That's about it. How about you, Holly, or Molly?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, Kim?
Um, I just want to ask everybody to keep Russ Thermas's family in your prayers, he was former council member, he passed away, so keep his family in your prayers.
It's gonna add that to, Russ was instrumental when I was the chief, and he always had boards of wisdom and input. Lost some pretty good council members in my tenure here, so I'm sorry to hear that. Also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Eric and his staff for the full work and all the full staff of the fire, the lifeguards and so forth, I know that's a lot of work and it's appreciated. Also, we had a meeting with Mr. Bartel from the store, and he does really put in a lot of work and what is hard work and effort to be.
There's always a lady in the corner, I know she says no, so we have to ask. At least we get us. Okay, if there's anything else that a person wants to bring up?
Okay, go ahead.
Quick thing that, with this new technology, new us with this asphalt management, with that new.
Yeah. For a job, man, recommend?
Yeah, that's a, being a lower cost alternative is gonna allow us to find mastic. So you have more full repairs this summer. You have to come, I have no idea what it's gonna happen, we have to use the machine, and I have to. Make more repairs, you know, for potholes and.
Yeah. That's something that he tried out for the first time last year, and it worked really good. And the fact that Public Works can do it themselves is saving the city a ton of. Um, and it's a good product, too, that's good stuff.
Yeah, and I have to say the same thing, right? You and Derek both put your heads together, and I, I personally have seen a lot of street improvements. I know you guys are trying your best to keep the cost down, but also to, um, take care of the pothole problems that we have, so thank you very much. Oh, you helped too, I mean. We talked about that today, and, and I will get back to that individual that, uh, you mentioned, so. If that, we all say we need to adjourn, man.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second it.
Okay, motion been made, and second to adjourn the uh, city council meeting of, uh, what is this, July the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three?
June, June.
July. All favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, eyes, perhaps, we're outta here.